It is. We'll call this meeting to order and if we can please rise for the invocation and our allegiance. Trustee Stone.
Lord, thank you for all bringing us here safely today. We thank you so much for the warm welcome that we received this morning from our St. Pete Collegiate High School students on the Gibbs campus here. We pray for them. We pray for their school year. We pray for their successes, both in the classroom and in life in general. Lord, give them friends, give them support, and we pray that for all of our students on every campus here at St. Pete College. We ask that you would lift these families up, help them succeed in their dreams, help them in the classroom. Thank you so much for the faculty and the staff that you've put in place here to make all of that happen, for the hard work and the dedication that they put in. Give us patience as we go throughout our days. Give us compassion for those around us. Thank you for the grace that you've shown us and let us show that to others. It's in your wonderful name that we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we have a retirement resolution. Ms. Reed.
Are there no financial aid folks? What's going on? How are you doing? Whereas Gwendolyn H. Reed, Assistant Director of Financial Assistance Services on the Tarpin Springs campus will retire November 30th after 33 years of exemplary service. Whereas Ms. Reed, a stickler for detail, who quickly mastered the intricate details of complex technical systems and federal regulations upon her arrival on the St. Petersburg Gibbs campus in 1986, rapidly became the go-to person and subject matter expert for her colleagues in financial assistance services. And whereas Ms. Reed over the years served the college in several capacities on many campuses, she played a prominent role in the establishment of the PeopleSoft system. In 2004, she became the functional lead for the PeopleSoft financial aid module and was responsible for training, data mapping, documentation of business practices, as well as PeopleSoft updates. Whereas Ms. Reed often was assigned the task of accumulating and reviewing documents and files for federal auditors, her professionalism and work ethic, along with her congeniality and sense of humor, established a rapport and trust with the regulators that benefited the college and made the process seamless and pleasant. And whereas Ms. Reed possesses a genuine concern for the well-being of her students, her dedication to the college, and the colleagues with whom she served has earned her the respect and admiration she justly deserves. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Gwendolyn H. Reed and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 19th day of November 2019. Go in.
Good morning to the Board of Trustees, to our President. Thank you so much to my SPC family. I want to know, I appreciate, I thank God for the divine intersection that He created for me to touch each of your lives and how you have touched my life. I'm so grateful and thankful, and I will miss SPC, but I am right around the corner. Financial aid is in my arteries, in my bones, everywhere that is about me. I will always be doing financial aid and I always will be here for SPC. Love you.
Thank you. SPC spotlight. Who's spotlighting this morning?
I am.
All right.
I typically don't, okay, I typically don't bring as much, but so much happened in November, so if the board and our college family would just indulge me for a moment, I need to share this information. SPC was awarded a Chapter of the Year with AFC, with the state of Florida. We also was recognized by the conference in many other ways as well as one of the most growing in our membership with the Association of Florida Colleges, which was humongous and I was very pleased. Financial Assistance Services has one of three exemplary practice award finalists from its My Future Initiative, and Mike Bennett and Leanne Wolfenden will present at the National Commission. Public Policy, one of our students, Andrew Davis, was invited to speak about his experience as a Bright Futures student at the annual AFC conference that took place in Ennisbrook. For National Apprentice Week last Friday, SPC had 150 business students and community partners here dealing with IT demands across our region, and Tech Data played a big role in that, and we were happy to have them here. I want to recognize trustee Stone Cypher for hosting at Green Bench Brewery, Brewing, not Brewery.
Get it right.
Sorry. On November 1st, we had a college career service department hosted the Florida Association of Colleges and Employers in a 2019 drive-in conference at the Seminole campus, and so we want to thank you for hosting and allowing us to be the hostess with the mostess. HEC was awarded the Gold Level Certificate by the Florida Business Case for Breastfeeding and being kind to women and providing those services for them. Model UN traveled to Geneva, Switzerland to compete in the World Federation, and the team captured the Best Small Delegation Award and four of the 12 individual awards at the conference. And they traveled to Washington to compete in the national conference and won the Outstanding Delegation Award. There's a lot more. I think I'm going to have to email the rest. The Kresge Foundation, we got a $50,000 grant for advancing student transportation and solutions, and open enrollment. Our HR team did a great job in benefits this time. We got it done in a timely manner without complaints, which was, which was very good. And we celebrated Spirit Week, which was amazing. I played in a kickball game at Seminole, and it kicked me more than I kicked it. But it was an opportunity for the college to just celebrate who we are and how we do what we do. And so those are the highlighted things from last month, since last meeting.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Thank you.
Moving on to our comments section, and I'll begin. Just thank you to the faculty and staff here on the Gibbs campus and especially here at the Collegiate High School. It's always one of my favorite meetings to come here when the enthusiasm of the students who are greeting us and showing us where to go, so thank you all there. It was wonderful to see the St. Pete College representatives at the YMCA Mayor's Breakfast, both in St. Petersburg and in Clearwater the past month. Dr. Williams prayed at the Clearwater Breakfast over the educators and students in, in our community, and she did a wonderful job, as always. I also wanted to just acknowledge our public policy students. In my real job, I spend a lot of time at public hearings and city commission and city council meetings, and it never fails that at these meetings, one of St. Pete College student, public policy students is there to speak. And I came to learn a while ago that Mr. Konchnabel, this is one of their requirements for class, and they each do such a nice job coming to the city council or city commission meetings, speaking on something non-topic on the agenda, and it always makes me so proud that they are there, and so just congratulations to our public policy students on that. A little bit of peremptory business, but there's not really another place on the agenda to do it, just a notice to the trustees. If you all will recall, a few months ago, we amended Dr. Williams' contract because her deferred compensation provision, there was a plan specified in her contract that she did not want to have to be locked into that specific plan, so we made that change in her contract. One of the reasons that plan was not good for Dr. Williams is it requires mandatory distributions every three years. This is the third year of her contract, and so you will see a mandatory distribution to Dr. Williams. That is part of her supposed to be deferred comp, the plan that was chosen just required that distribution. It's now been adjusted, so in the future she won't receive those distributions every three years. So just wanted to let you all know in case you had a question about that. Also, at the end of the agenda, if you all will have your calendars out, December 14th is graduation for winter graduation, and we have three graduation services. So we need to be very intentional about which of the five of us are going to be there collectively or independently, and I will be the first to apologize once again. This is my daughter's state gymnastics meet that weekend, and they don't tell us when she competes and for another couple of weeks, and so I will be to be determined for that morning, depending on her competition schedule, but if you all can get your calendars out for that morning, so we can confirm that there's somebody at each one of those.
Vice Chair, what are the times for the three graduations?
Nine, 12, and three.
I'll do three.
Yours is three.
I guess I have to do all three of them.
If you want to do all three, that would be great, but the one where you're getting at is...
We can do this now if you want. Apparently we are.
I got nine and 12.
You have nine and 12?
Yep.
Thank you.
I will do whatever you have me do.
Wow. Was that you do all three?
I love, I love this, I love Mr. Kidwell. In that case, I'm doing 12 and 3.
There you go. So y'all could do nine and 12, and we can do... You can do nine and 12.
Nine and 12.
Right? And that's four of us at 12. Do we need that?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's the weekend before Christmas. I mean, it's like, I don't have anything else to do. I mean, do we, you want, okay, all right, I'll do 12.
She says the weekend before Christmas. Is Christmas coming?
Appreciate it.
And hopefully I'll be...
Nathan, you have nine and 12. Trustee Gibbons, you have 12 and 3. Trustee Kidwell, you said all three, or you want to choose nine and 12?
Nine and 12. What time will the 3 o'clock one be over?
We try to do all of them within a two-hour period, so if we can...
And it's at the Trumps?
It'll be before.
Indian Rocks Baptist.
All, all three.
All three.
Okay. That's why we have three.
Vice Chair Bello, what were your times again?
12 and 3.
Okay.
Thank you all, and my apologies to the students and the administration and to my colleagues.
All right. Outside.
Be great.
We can do graduation.
I mean, if, you know, we've got to take the rain into consideration and the weather, but it would be nice if we could not have to pay a fee and be totally disrupted every time the Trump has something going. It's sad that it's, we have a lot of rooms in Tarpin, but it's still far for everybody else.
We don't have anything large enough to hold us. We have a lot of...
You mean like outside?
We could do it outside here.
Great house heels?
Yeah, outside. We've been there outside, but again, we're trying to avoid outside.
Okay. Thank you for diverging on that. So now, other comments by board members.
Good. I had the pleasure of touring the Leeper Ratner Museum, Art Museum, a couple of weeks ago, and it was great. I'm not an art person, so I, I kind of went in with my eyes open, and the staff there is great. I attended my first board meeting a week later, and they have their stuff together, and I will be buying a membership here soon, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
I was with Mr. Kidwell for that tour, and I'm sad to say I hadn't been there in about three and a half years. The Leeper Ratner Museum is fantastic. It's unfortunately a hidden gem, I feel like, in our community, but I think we're moving in the right direction there, and I was excited to hear some of the plans we have to make sure there's more of a focus on what that museum contains, some of the programming that they have there, and also I think what it brings to North County as far as the arts and culture, which is extremely impressive, and it should be a tourist draw in the Tarpin Springs area at the very least. So I think they're moving in the right direction there, but I agree with Tommy. Great, great to visit, great to see it, great to have a tour, and I'm glad it's part of our St. Pete College facilities. We also had a foundation workshop. I just wanted to thank Jessie and Mike Carroll for putting that together. We had quite a few foundation board members there, and it was a few hours together where we could work on what makes us the most effective and efficient as a foundation board, and what does that look like as we interact in the community, and how do we use the gifts that we have to make sure the college has what it needs. So I was glad Jessie put that together. Thank you, and I look forward to my first foundation board meeting this Thursday.
Yes, excuse me. If you have not had the pleasure to see Dr. Williams take the stage as a keynote speaker, I encourage you to find the opportunity, because she keynoted the spring breakfast in her bunch, I guess they call it. I mean, there wasn't a dry eye in the house. We all laughed, we all cried, we all experienced every emotion during the speech, but you did an amazing job, not only representing the college, but telling your story.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I learned on Facebook yesterday that you're also going to be a woman of distinction for the Girl Scouts, which is a really big honor, so congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
That is a big honor. Anything, trustee?
I'm good.
I also, trustee Stone Cypher reminded me when he mentioned the foundation board and Mike Carroll, who's here this morning, or at least was. Thank you, Mike, and I wanted to recognize Mike Carroll, who's the foundation president right now, who stopped by this morning for the trustees' meeting on his way to class, because he has truly, he is such a wonderful part of the St. Petersburg College family, and he's taking a class this semester here on campus, and so I saw him, and he has his backpack ready to go. So thank you, Mike, for everything that you're doing for the college. We can't tell you thank you enough, and we appreciate you, so. Trustee, or Dr. Williams?
I want to echo Mike Carroll's leadership and the foundation's support. I was very shocked to know when Mr. Carroll said he wanted to experience the student experience, and so to do that, he took a class. So faculty, you have a foundation member somewhere in your class really taking on the experience, and it shows the dedication, and it also shows the foundation's support of the college and their participation in what we're doing and providing that support. I've given enough earlier, so that was it.
Very good. The next thing on the agenda is our public comment, and we don't have any comment cards. Is there anybody here who would like to speak who did not present a card? Okay. Review and approval of minutes. Any comments from our October 15th minutes that were delivered in your packages?
Move approval of the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Monthly report, Ms. Gardner?
Good morning, Chair Cole and trustees. I do not have a report this morning.
And our next, our new system of highlighting some of our direct service organizations. We have Mr. Wilborn here to talk about the Palladium. Welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm glad Damon Dockerty joined me. I want to thank the board and Dr. Williams for this opportunity to talk about my favorite subject, the Palladium of St. Petersburg College. It's been 12 years since the college and Palladium came together, 12 years since I've had a job. This has been great. It's, it's really been a wonderful experience. Damon actually was on the committee that hired me, so I have to say thanks to him, too. The Palladium has a really unique mission, and I don't think everybody understands that in this world of performing arts centers. We were created to be a professional and affordable venue for our community. When we became part of St. Petersburg College, we added a lot of wonderful St. Petersburg College events to that. Last night, the Madrigalians and the Choral Group were there. The rehearsals were just breathtaking, but, so we have a lot of SPC events now, and we also saw our mission as to be local, and we expanded it to support performing artists, the best talent in our community. We don't think you can be an arts community unless you support the artists and performers who live here. We're often the first place where a lot of these performers have a ticketed event, and they become part of our family and get to do wonderful things. The history, as I mentioned, I think we built all these performing arts centers in the 80s and 90s, and quickly the community realized no one could afford to do a show there if you were a local organization. So some wonderful philanthropists, the Huff family, the Stavros family, and many others in St. Petersburg, with their own money, bought this old 1925 church. They spent a million dollars to redo it, and they ran it from 1998 until 2007, when, through a wonderful deal, the Palladium became part of St. Petersburg College with no debt, and a $5 million endowment was created. So it's, it's been a pretty wonderful history, and we have continued to really take that mission seriously. We ran this list of artists, it could actually go on for two or three more pages. I think the first name on there is a guy named Billy Joel. You may have heard of him, but the Palladium is just the home for all sorts of performances, from names like that to kids dancing in the Nutcracker from St. Petersburg. Our Nutcracker, so many of our shows are local, and everybody says, "Well, I performed there as a kid." So we try to keep that tradition going while adding a lot of things that make our balance sheet work. So it's been, it's been a lot of fun. We mentioned that we were here for the community. This sheet could go on for page after page. Our communities and, our community partners, our clients, our everybody, pretty much in the Tampa Bay area, who has a nonprofit or an arts organization, just in the last 10 days, we partnered with the Carter Woodson Museum on a program of black classical music, with the Warehouse Arts District on a tribute to Toni Morrison, with Preserve the Burg, we presented one of the nation's top experts on creating livable cities, and we crowned Ms. St. Pete. And we had, that was just half the events we did last week.
Wow.
Damon, along with, Damon really professionalized our tech crew, and I performed at the Palladium years ago, and my tech crew was a high school student who didn't really know how to plug anything in. Damon really transformed that, and then along the way, after he got that going, he took over our rental business and has built our, that core of our business in an incredible way. And when he's not doing that, he teaches for SPC, so I wanted to talk about this.
Right. The Palladium hosts interns that are in the MIRA program and a production degree. They do 60 hours of internship, each student, over the course of a semester. Since 2010, we've had over 300 interns have earned 14,000 hours of internship credit at the Palladium, working alongside local and touring professionals on nearly every Palladium event. Students gain insight into a business that's based on creativity, and they gain the skills to enter the workforce and enjoy an enhanced career trajectory because of the wide variety of experiences that they get with us. Palladium hosts about 200 events a year, public events.
I think Damon said he was out working on a professional project the other day, and a lot of the students working alongside, not students, the workers alongside him were former students who would come through the program. So that MIRA program is really working.
We placed a lot of students in local businesses that you may have heard of, iHeart Media, Cox Media, Feld Entertainment, ESI Productions, J. Thor Productions, and many of the students start their own entrepreneurial or freelance work as well.
Want to talk about revenue growth? The Palladium was a very small business when we took it over, and we've shown really steady and solid growth in our revenues, and these revenues really represent direct earned revenues, not, we have money that passes through us through ticket sales, and that's not even reflected in this. Our budget has grown substantially every year. I think the only thing that might limit our future growth is we need more months in the year. If the board could work on that, we would appreciate that. The one reason the Palladium was handed over to the college was it was a wonderful idea, but the founders had not quite figured out how to make it go, and they were running a pretty serious deficit, and that's why the endowment was created. And in the early years, the college absorbed some of that deficit. We worked with Dr. Williams in her former position to say, "How do we erase that deficit?" And some of it was the community finding us and knowing what we had done, but some of it was changes to our staffing model, changes to our price structure, changes to our service fees and concession sales. And all those things together have led us to, you know, continued years of profitability. We also came on in 2007. Something happened in 2008 and 2009, you may have heard of, that sort of slowed down the entertainment business a lot. But as we emerged from that recession, the Palladium has been solidly in the black, and we see no change in that for the foreseeable future. Our endowment is very well invested by the foundation, and our friends at the Palladium account, which is our fundraising account, is at record levels right now, and we partner with the foundation in so many ways. So we're excited. I think the future is really good, and I don't see this changing. We do, we are in the most competitive performing arts market in the country, if you ask anybody. We have three major performing arts centers competing for talent, lots of smaller ones, new ones coming online like the State Theater and others who are directly looking at, "Well, the Palladium's a success. Let's see if we can get some of that business." So we've made a lot of improvements over the years, but we need to spend some money on our, our main hall. The seats are not that great. They're from the 20s. People have changed, the levels of comfort, and I think it was a church, we didn't want people to be too comfortable in the church. You wanted them thinking about God and not having too much fun, but, so we're needing to approve our seats. And it's true, ladies and gentlemen, I hate to tighten. We're going to do, Damon, why don't you talk just a little bit about this, because this is something you've been right here.
One of our complaints that we get often is the comfort of the seating and also the sightlines in the room, particularly for things like dance, which is important, or the orchestra. You don't get a great view of the stage. You have somebody's head right in front of you that's blocking half the stage, so that's the first thing we really want to take care of and improve, make sure that every patron gets 100% of the show. And then the acoustics are another important factor. The church was designed for one type of sound. We're doing both acoustic and electric concerts. Florida Orchestra is one of our newer big clients. We do a lot of work with St. Petersburg Opera, very important acoustic sound needed, but a lot of our business is now electric concerts, and we need to make sure that the sound is appropriate for whatever we do. That includes building out the room to make the actual construction help with the sound, and also our sound system in the hall, we purchased about 10 years ago, brand new, and that kind of gave us the liftoff into this good business. It's about 10 years old now, and just like our laptops and any technology, it starts to become antiquated, and the manufacturers no longer support fixing the gear. So we're going to need to make an investment in the sound systems. And the overstage systems, including electrics and rigging, need to be professionalized so that we can do a wide variety of things from day to day to day to day. We're doing wildly different types of events, and we need to be able to do that professionally and quickly.
And the good news is, we're not here to ask you for money for that. We're actually, college has been a great and generous supporter. We are going to launch, we think in the spring, it might, timing is still in the works, but we're going to launch a major fundraising campaign. We've gotten some great pledges already, and we hope to be able to make these improvements with our own raised money. We might come to you and ask for a small donation, but we're not going to be asking the college for major support at this time. We think we can do this ourselves with help from Jesse Turtle and the foundation. So that's our report. Any questions?
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. That was a great job, Mr. Welborn. Thank you.
Thank you.
How much is this renovation going to cost you to?
In this kind of world, you could spend up. We're looking at $1 million to $1.5 million. Seats alone are about $500,000 just to buy the seats. That's not installing them. So anything you do in these kind of places is expensive. However, I was just at Tampa Theater where they had to raise $6 million because their building was falling apart. The college has been a great steward of our building. The building is secure. It's solid. All the systems are working well, electrical and air conditioning. So really, we can make these improvements. I would say $1.5 million would do it short term.
So the high end would be $1.5 million?
I think that's the low end. The high end could be, I think the high end could be maybe $3 million.
These are phased renovations.
But we would do this in phases.
Okay, so you're doing it in phases?
Yes.
I think one of the mistakes, Dr. Williams and board trustees, that the city, along with other folks, the whole county, actually, we had become a Mecca for arts. I remember when my buddy, Cassian Reed, was the mayor of Atlanta, we talked about, we were running at the same time, and we talked about the economic impact of the arts in the community. But one of the things that nobody else does, and I think as a college, and we should really look at doing, but not just this arts venue, but all of them, Lipo Radnor, all of them, what is the economic impact of this particular venue to the county and the city, right? So that when we start to put investments into things, we can show also, what's the economic impact? What kind of engine is this for downtown and its economy, right? And we ought to get smarter about how we do that, and I think that's one of the things that we should do now, when they make that investment, so that we can show donors as well as the board, like, we're investing in something that we'll get a return on, right? I think the state looks at that. I think a lot of other people would look at it in a good light. In fact, this is before Mr. Welborn was here, but I remember Mr. Huff asked Dr. Cutler for what was going to be the impact of this building, right? And when we turn it over, what is it going to look like long term? Are you going to be able to sustain this? Because he didn't want to continue to put money into it. That was just one of the meetings that I sat in on, Mr. Huff. He was a really tough negotiator, he and a guy by the name of Doyle McLendon. I think they probably were the biggest benefactors in the downtown arts community over the years. Long story short, I think that's, we should look at doing those things to help. I think that helps Mr. Turtle. I think it helps them, and I also think that it helps us to be able to have a, to show that we have a plan of action, and we all actually know what we're bringing to that community as opposed to always. People look at the college, and they come to us, and they want to hand out a lot of times, and they want money, or they want this, they want that, right? And this way, we can, when we go back to ask for things from the cities and municipalities and other folks that we need things from, we can say, "Here's what we're bringing to the table already," right? So I'd like to see us maybe try to do that before we start this plan to help you guys a little bit.
Be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just have one comment. Thank you both for your leadership. The Palladium Downtown in St. Petersburg is just a fantastic asset for our city. And Paul, specifically to you, I've known you for years. I see you everywhere. You're out and about. You're a member of this community, and every time I see you, I overhear you talking about the Palladium, and your passion just bleeds through, and it's so refreshing to see. We're glad you're at the helm, Damon, you as well. But I know Paul a little better here, so Paul, I just wanted to thank you specifically for your vision and for making that vision a reality and introducing people to the concept of what the Palladium is and can be, and I think it can be even better. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And I just want to say, people tell me, "Oh, you've done such great work." Without the college underpinning, without the deal that was struck that put the endowment in place and those other things that the college did early on and continues to do for us, it makes me look a lot smarter. It makes me look more successful. And we really are able to be successful because of the underpinning of the college, so we're happy to be part of it. I actually took Dr. Cutler to lunch a while back to say, "You know, the deal you struck actually worked. It took a few years, but it actually worked," and so we appreciate that. We appreciate you guys.
Madam Chair, one more thing.
Yes.
Mr. Welborn, I also want to commend you. I have not met a nonprofit group, but you haven't figured out how to work with them. I think that's important because there are so many nonprofits that want to use the Palladium, and you are so respectful, and you always try to find a way to work with them on the things that they're trying to do. And that's a big part of what the college is doing, and I want to say thank you to you and your staff for doing that on a regular basis.
Thank you so much.
Thank you both.
Thank you all.
Good job.
Good morning, Chair Cole, members of the board, Dr. Williams. I'm here today to talk a little bit about our monthly dashboard for the month of November and give you some brief updates. So I'm going to start with the top left, which has to do with recruitment, and I'm going to start in the middle of the three. As you can see, our increase in our new students enrolled is down negative 1.1%. That's actually where we were last month. And to kind of equate that into dollars, we're about $770,000 in tuition down right now. If you look at the right, to the right of that, where you look at our Workforce Institute, this has been increasing month over month, and this year, you can, this month, you can actually see that we've had a 55% increase. This equates to $100,000 of increased revenue, which if you remember from months of board budget meetings where we've been showing up and down, this is a really positive trend for our Workforce Institute, so that we're very proud of. Now, if you look at the very first one, which has to do with our increase of our admissions applications, this is down negative 1.8, which is actually 2% better than last month. And we're looking towards now our winter semester, our spring semester, and we still have our summer semester to go as we're putting together all of our tuition for the year. So although it sounds like we're down in our revenue, which we are, we still have some time to make up that, and we are doing quite a few things at this point to try to remedy that situation. If you look in the middle at our retention, you'll notice that our Learning Resource Center usage is still up. It's not as up as it was in the very beginning of the semester. It's kind of midway. We're going to see another jump of this as we move into final exams. Our events attendance, however, has shown a large increase. That's because our career and academic communities have begun their weekly, week-long events, and students are definitely attending these events in bigger numbers than they ever have in the past. This is great for our students because we know that students who attend these events have a 10-point increase in their success rate. So we're really trying to encourage our students to attend those. Our withdrawal rate is still down. It's down 3.8%. It's not the crazy number that you saw last month. This is more where we're trying to head towards our end goal of being down 5% for the term. Employee engagement this month has not had a change, so I'm going to skip over that and go down to the bottom left in learning experience. If you look at the faculty participation in our professional development, that still shows an ongoing increase. We're doing weekly webinars. We're doing many different things through SEDL where our faculty have a chance to be involved in different professional development opportunities. Last month, we had, I shared about our Spark usage. It was actually down last month, but we were just starting our week-long faculty tools push, and you can see that this is a dramatic push because we are up 42.5% for this month. And that probably equates to the reason why we're down in our learning management email usage. Our students are not as interested in getting their emails through the learning management system. They're more interested in getting other forms of either text communication through Spark or through their regular Gmail, Microsoft account emails. And our last section is our resource alignment. We do not have a change this month in grants, but we do have a change in our non-state revenue. Remember, this is the revenue streams that allow us to, that we have some control over that we're trying to track right now. And our non-state is up $10 million for this month, and that's actually $12 million at the end of the month after we finalized all the books. So that shows a good progress towards our overall goal. And then if we look at our fundraising for our Titan Fund, remember, this is the fund that allows us to utilize funds. It's non-allocated. It's not re, it's not purposed, it immediately allows us to have some flexibility and be able to move. There's a, the Titan Fund is up 11.9%. And I want to take a second just to do a shameless plug. Our foundation has challenged our community to raise $30,000, and if they do that, then they'll match us $30,000. And right now, we're just under the halfway point. We're about $14,000. So for all of the board members and anyone in the room and anyone who's listening, we have until the end of December to make that grant that matching amount. So if you want to pull out your checkbooks, we do have Giving Tuesday. The Tuesday after Thanksgiving is Giving Tuesday, so that would be a really great time. We're going to do a big push on that day for us to try to meet that $30,000 goal. That's my report for this month, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford. I know this is just the second month we've seen the dashboard, and so I'm hoping that nobody's ever shy up here, but that if there are statistics or trends that you want to see modified or explained differently, it's definitely a work in progress. So Dr. Crawford chose what we thought could be good snapshots to show how we're reaching our ultimate goals, but if there are other things, we certainly want to provide those to you and not limit it. So does anybody have any questions?
I just have a quick question. It's, I don't know if it's a typo or if I just don't understand it, but under revenue, it says 1920 budgeted $72,600, and then below it, it says 1920 budgeted $20,800. Is it a typo?
It is a typo.
Budgeted versus actual?
Budgeted versus our actual is where we're headed.
As of now.
Yeah. So our budgeted is $72,000.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where we're headed towards.
The actual, what we've received so far. Got it. Okay. Just needed clarification. Can you, can you do social media push, like, write them for us for Giving Tuesday so that we can help support in that way?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Great idea.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Smiley. Dr. Strickland.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, board members, and Madam President. We come in a spirit of Thanksgiving today. I want to thank you for allowing us to present today the African-American male student success task force recommendation. I'm honored to be with Dr. Strickland today in his presentation, a wonderful, powerful person to work with. And so then, if I may, I start by then reminding us of the task force charge, and it is threefold. It is to review and assess the climate of past and current initiatives for African-American males. It is to identify and review opportunities and challenges at SPC for African-American males. Thirdly, to develop and implement recommendations, principles, strategies, and programs, both short term and long term, for improving the success and retention of African-American males, and identify those who will be responsible and accountable for the same. And so then, the task force charge is clear. And so then, we reflect just a bit on the background of the environment that operated within the room of the task force. Please note that based on Dr. Luke Wood's research, the college culture must reflect the four elements of success for African-American male students, must incorporate them all. And so then, these four elements undergirded the environment and the work of SPC every time we met. And so then, what are they? First, students should be challenged with rigorous coursework, to think critically, creatively, and to learn how to apply difficult concepts. I want to drive that point home because we want to make it very clear that there is no note about somehow they are reducing the rigor of the work of students. In fact, we're grounded on what Dr. Luke says. In fact, the work is to be challenging and rigorous for African-American males and all other students. And then, secondly, the research tells us that students must also know that they are highly supported from every aspect and corner of the college. And thirdly, students must experience high expectations and know that faculty members believe in their ability to succeed. And I'm convinced and believe that our faculty are going to do that. And then, fourthly, students must believe that faculty authentically care about them, period. And so then, each time we met, these four elements of student success based on research undergirded the room. And so then, if I may, then, we're reminded of the goal, and the goal is clear. It says the goal of the task force is to close the success rate gap and to accelerate the overall academic achievement for African-American male students. And we say then, achieving this goal adds to SPC's three pillows of envisionary commitment. Well, how does it do that? Clearly, it adds to academic excellence if we do what we're saying we're going to do. It will add to economic mobility if we do what we're saying we're going to do, and it will add to community engagement if we do what we're saying we're going to do. So then, what becomes a specific task, what was a task that drove the committee in its work? Every one of them. And that task was to identify the research-based determinants, research-based determinants, research-based determinants for African-American male achievement, and to recommend sustainable systemic solutions for improving success, retention, and completion. So we say to you, humbly, and before you today, Madam Chair, board members, and Madam President, after four months of research and deliberation, the task force submits the following recommendations to be included in the final report. We're honored to present those to you. My colleague, Dr. Strickland.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Dr. Williams. Once again, I'm following.
That's how you learn after lunch.
I'm ready. You ready? Recommendation number one. It should come as no surprise that we're asking to bring back the Brother to Brother program. You heard from Dr. Ernest McDonald a few months ago. It was life-changing for him, and so that will be recommendation number one. It will also include all sites, all campuses. We're not just saying roll this out at Gibbs or Clearwater. We're saying every single campus should have the Brother to Brother program. You also see the line item in a future slide that details the amount of budget we're requesting. Recommendation number two, we obviously need to develop this onboarding and networking program to support the intervention for our students. And so we're identifying college personnel, college-wide, that are committed to this cause. And as you've heard from Dr. McDonald, a sense of belonging helped him in his succeeding here at the college. And maybe there's even a board member or two that's willing to serve as a mentor. Recommendation number three, we want to make sure that we create this professional development. It should be for everyone. It shouldn't be optional. It should be mandated for all faculty and staff to be a part of this program and to be a part of this training. Also, I want to plug Rachel Bennett. I believe she's here this morning. She's having a webinar December 5th at 12:30 with the young men from the Brother to Brother program so they can highlight their experiences, and that should be a training everyone should attend. And recommendation number four, it's important to look, and you'll see this in a future slide as well, the needs for our learning support. Matt Bode and his team began this work over the summer, and as you can see, there's been some modest gains. But if you really dive detail, into the details, rather, you'll see 75 more African-American males with a GPA of 249 or lower actually came to learning support. That's 75 more than the year before, and that's good work by Matt Bode and his team. And then you can also see there's been less term withdrawals. Turn it over to Turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Smiley.
And then our fifth recommendation, we come before you with it. And that recommendation then is to hire a Director of Diversity and Inclusion Officer whose primary responsibility is to build the infrastructure for the college and the community to support African-American male and other minority initiatives, including mentoring, partnerships, and financial support. The task force has concluded that SPC must commit to building an infrastructure for the college and the community to support African-American male initiatives. This commitment must integrate the nonprofit, faith-based, and corporate communities in providing wraparound services to African-American males. We believe this recommendation to be vitally important for our work and moving forward to achieve the goal that is before us. Recommendation number six, as we examine it very carefully, the number is clear. As we look at our gateway courses, we can see then that the gap from those who are African-American males versus all students is significant. You look at the gap of about 24% in the success rate at gateway courses with African-American males versus all other students. And so then, we say the data show a significant disparity between African-American males and all student success rates in gateway courses. And so gateway courses are foundational, and they're large enrollment courses. The general efforts on this have already started, and I'm very pleased with that. Some of the faculty members are already working on this, and we're going to achieve this, there's no question about it. We're going to get success in our gateway courses. This recommendation calls for a formal working group to be formed to develop and implement strategies for further improvement in success rate in the gateway courses we have here at the college. We can do that. Recommendation number seven, as we take a look at it very carefully, the task force has concluded that we must commit to building a more diverse teaching force among faculty. Our recommendation is to work to increase the full-time faculty population to be equivalent to the African-American student population with a particular emphasis on including and increasing the presence of African-American male faculty. As we take a look at it very carefully, 14.9% of the students at the college are African-American. As it stands now, 9.9% of our faculty are African-American. So this recommendation seeks to expand targeted recruitment of faculty and staff who represent the population of Pinellas County. We believe by doing this, it will further diversify our faculty on St. Canisburg College, and we believe it will have a powerful impact on our students.
So recommendation number eight is similar to what Dr. Smiley just referenced in terms of finding mentors. Dr. Ernest McDonald's not the only person willing. We've heard from several other individuals after our last report who are willing, who have stepped up and said they want to help. Obviously, we need to work with Jesse and the foundation as well to identify some of these business leaders and these corporations that are interested in assisting us in this. And then I also want to show you all the big ask. And this is obviously where we might have some additional dialogue. At the end of the day, $689,000 is a big number when you're talking about budgetary constraints and where we're at with enrollment. However, this request is for the fiscal year 2021, and we know you all have your board workshop coming up. And hopefully, this will be an item that you all discuss, which will give us a charge to find this money, to reallocate funds if needed to support it. Now, when we talk about the resurrection of the Brother to Brother program, that includes the model that's similar to the WOW program. So you have a basis to go off of each WOW. There's a coordinator of WOW, and then you have an advisor. So the request is very much in line with what WOW does. And then you also note that not all of these requests have a budgetary request or a monetary amount. And so we wanted to show you that some of this work will continue to be done without the request of money. But then number four, it's important that you know that Matt Bode and his team has been operating on a shoestring budget, this $62,000 request, is to assist and continue the work that they're doing within learning support. And as Dr. Smiley mentioned, the hiring of a Diversity and Inclusion Officer should be a priority for this institution because we are an organization of this size. And if you look at other organizations throughout the country, they don't have an example where you don't have that position at that organization. And so with that being said, we also want to thank our task force. This work could not have been done without these people, faculty, staff, and students. And it was a well-rounded group of individuals that were committed to the cause. And we're taking applications for any additional people that want to jump on this committee because our work is not done. And for that, I say thank you, and we're happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you both.
It's a great job, great recommendations. I'm looking forward. When is the committee meet, Dr. Smiley and Dr. Mark?
Okay. We have met six times to complete this work. We'll be meeting in two weeks, then to finalize the report and submit that to Dr. Williamson. Then, of course, that'll be made available to you. So as it stands right now, in two weeks, we'll be meeting again. And I can submit though the dates that we will schedule at that point moving forward.
I mean, but after you submit your final report, you'll be meeting still?
Yes, sir.
I don't want to jump in after the fact. So I'll wait until you submit your report, and I'll join the committee. Dr. Strickland, thank you. Dr. Smiley?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, how do you want, do you want to discuss this now? Do you want us to digest this and then talk about it at the meeting next month? I just don't want to jump ahead too far.
Sure. I think we can do a little bit of both. So one of the things that Dr. Crawford and Dr. Williamson, Jackie and I talked about this week was moving into our planning. And obviously, as we see on our spreadsheet here, the number one thing that we're looking at on the top right corner there is increasing student success. And so what's, I think, wonderful about the recommendations of this committee is that this really applies student body-wide as we're looking at our total student success. And so this board challenged the administration to say, based on our needs for student success, what is one of the largest groups that we can address, and what tactics can we take to start closing that gap? And once we start closing that gap in African-American males, how does that translate to close the gap holistically in student success? So I think for the purpose of the budgetary requests and those discussions, I think we can wait. But if you have specific discussions about how this fits in overall or what the committee's doing, I think it's appropriate to have that discussion now.
Thank you. Thank you both for all your work on this and everyone else who's involved. I know this is something we, as a board, have been pushing for quite a while. And I think great things are going to come out of the conversation that we're having and the thought that's been put in. Just a couple of points, and we can discuss this all further. Obviously, some of these things will, if approved by the board on all eight recommendations, however many there were, will take a while to phase in, which I'm sure is understandable. However, there's some things that can be done more quickly and probably needed to be, need to be done quickly. But I think what stuck out for me, and one thing I'm really happy to hear, were the four points we made at the beginning, that our college culture needs to support those who are in need. They need to experience authentic care. And then the final two, they need to be challenged and still have those high expectations. I think that's critical, and I'm glad, Dr. Smiley, you mentioned that and touched on that. We're in no way trying to lower the bar here. The bar stays where it is, if not going higher, because that's what these students deserve. And I think that's what we can give them as an institution. So I was very happy to hear that that's where your all heads were at as well. As far as some of the other details of the plan, we can get into those later. But I like the direction this is going in. Some of these things will be more difficult than others to get done. I guess my last question, with the Director of Diversity and Inclusion, have you all kind of formulated specifically what that would look like as far as what the role of that individual would be? And is this someone who's focused on African-American males or diversity and inclusion overall?
Overall.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, overall.
Yeah, and there's several, obviously, good examples of institutions that have this position.
Sure.
But there's also positions outside of the academia world that you can also pull in what they're doing.
Right.
But it's about teaching pedagogy. It's about making sure our faculty and staff are trained in how to roll out and have conversations. There's lots of good information out there that we can utilize to better support all minorities.
Yeah, and I think, I think as part of this practice, when we get to this point in this task force, is probably the perfect place to start the conversation, is what is a college do we mean when we're saying diversity? And I think having that definition out there so that everyone's on the same page with an understanding of that is going to be really, really critical to the success of this moving forward. But you're right, there's plenty of other organizations that have already done this that we can take notes and move forward with.
You're right on point, Trustee Stonecifer. We have the ability right now, we're working with Achieving the Dream, and they're coming in to work with us on equity and inclusion, which is above and beyond minority equity. It's equity of thought, it's working with people from the LGBTQ community, being collaborative and engaging, making sure that individuals who have accessibility issues have what they need. So it expands farther than just the ethnicity component. And so in February, I believe our Achieving the Dream Coach for Equity will be on campus, and we'll start working this out. And that person can definitely work with the committee and myself as we create this role, but also what it really means at the college. We have equity as a value. I don't believe we have taken this college-wide, and there has not been a college-wide training on equity and how SPC will create that community of care when it comes to different ideals and groups and individuals. And so that's something that I like the committee having put that as a mandatory training. Because if we're going to create a community of care, you cannot overlook equity. You cannot do that. And so if we're going to make a difference in the lives of not just these gentlemen, if you look at the data, you see our African-American males and Hispanic students, along with African-American females, are struggling. And so we have to roll up our sleeves for all of those groups. So there's some work there that we can do once the board gives us the move, the greenlight.
Is there a portion of the committee that, or is part of the focus of the committee, or has it been on any type of national, trying to get grants or anything like that? And this is a national problem. I think you'll remember, I sat last year at the college conference in DC and listened to some really creative things that they're doing across the country.
That's a good point.
But we can solve this problem.
Yeah. And Katie Schultz, we love her and the grants that she's able to pull into the college, but they're not often sustainable. And we utilized grants several years ago, it was way before your time, where we had positions filled with grants, and over time, they were phased out. So we have experience in using some grants in a positive manner, but then also losing positions as well, if that makes sense.
We did get a grant to assist us with our African-American males. Is Katie, is Dr. Schultz here?
She is.
And we did get a grant to assist us with this?
We have very good indication that we will get it.
That we will get it? Okay.
I do, Jesse. But it is not official, official.
Got it.
But I think Mark makes a really good point. Grants allow us to jumpstart what we're trying to do, but they are not sustainable. So we have some grants that are going to allow us to do what we do and do it better and quicker, but then we all need to plan for some sustainability opportunities. So, but we're focusing more on the support services with these grants, with the tutoring, the varying, you know, extra laptop lending, those types of things.
I think Trustee Bello is on to something. What she shared with me that she learned when she talked about national programs was what are the high-impact practices as well that we could employ in this initiative? And I think you guys used Dr. Wood's philosophy and his work, which is a national initiative for African-American males. But Trustee Bello, you had given me some information on some of those programs. And Dr. Strickland, I believe I handed that to the committee, it may have been something you've looked at. But we'll go back and look at that again. But I think that Dr. Wood's work is very good and is being used nationally. So we are using a national initiative to do it, and we're seeking grants to help us get started. The thing about grants is you have to have the money afterwards. So when it ends, you have to have a way to phase that initiative in and keep it going. So we have to do that work.
But I could mention that the $50,000 grant that we received from Kresge is specifically focusing on transportation barriers for minority students and how to be, address those types of things. So we're also trying to kind of look at solutions to the problems, not just grants that would add money for children.
I'm just thinking, it's going to be a whole lot easier to phase, you know, $100,000 at a time over a couple of years as opposed to find $700,000 in next year's budget. So even if it's not sustainable?
Agreed.
Yeah. I mean, I think we should be looking for every opportunity we can to kind of help us ease into that spend. Thank you both very much. Thank you to everybody on the committee for all of the work. We know that, you've heard this board say over and over again, that this is certainly a top priority. So to have this and be able to review it in time for our strategic planning and our implementation of next year's priorities is important. And along those lines, just not on the agenda, but to preview next month, one of the things that we talked about was how having this board specifically set those priorities for the team in December, so in spring, when the budget cycle is being developed and the budget's being developed, they're not guessing. They're not cutting programs that we don't want them to cut in favor of programs because they're reading our mind. And so that's our job as the policymakers to say, no, we need to be shifting revenues from here to there because this is our top priority. So that's why we're thrilled to have Jesse and his team looking at this more holistically. It's not just fundraising for the foundation, but it's how does our budget team and our fundraising team and our grant team all work together to really provide these solutions?
Agreed.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have no old business. New business was listed in your packet. There were our personnel report, grants and funds and contracts, and modification of our spot survey and updating a lease. Are there any of these items from your packet that you wish to discuss or pull off the consent agenda? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Informational reports are in your packet. And thanks again for the Palladium Report and also Trustee Kidwell for your update about Lieber Rattner. I look forward to hearing about the board meeting there as well. So are there any comments any of you all who serve on these specific DSOs would like to make, other than what's in our reports? And our budget, as a reminder, this is our third month. I mean, we missed Janice and Brian standing up here every month, but our budget, if we're on track, there were no surprises there if you looked over that. No, yes ma'am?
With the budget, I just want to, and I know that Dr. Crawford talked about it, just want to make sure that the Board of Trustees, as well as the college family, knows that we budgeted to be flat this year, and we are below flat. We are $770,000 below flat. So for the college family, we've got some things to do to roll our sleeves up. We met yesterday and reviewed strategies to make sure that we capture that, catch up with that. And I think Dr. Crawford mentioned it. But anytime we see an anomaly, I will make sure to point that out in the budget to make sure that the board is fully aware of what's going on. But also the college family, that we have got to catch up on our enrollment in those areas because we budgeted to be flat, and we're below that. So we have strategy, but we need to keep that at the forefront as we move forward.
And along those lines, and Dr. Crawford did speak to it, that's really driven by enrollment at this point, right?
Right.
And is that one of the cycle things that we're going to see as enrollment picks up for spring?
Well, that's the plan. I think the best way for enrollment to really skyrocket is bring on more vibrant and new programs that the workforce needs. programs that the workforce needs and get things moving. We've got some work to do in those areas. And so the sense of urgency is upon us to move that forward. Because students take classes. Classes equal certificates or degrees. So we need to make sure that we're on the cutting edge of those programs and moving that forward. Our deans are working diligently to make that happen. And we're moving some baccalaureate degrees forward through the process to get those approved. Our workforce is working very diligently. But I just want to make that clear, that we need to move on that.
Can that be our next monthly report?
Sure. This is part of it, but we could definitely bring more detail.
Have a focus.
Sure.
So in December is our strategic planning, so we won't have a focus report, so it'll be January.
Okay. But I can send you something in writing.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Yeah. I'd also ask, in our information report, in addition to the operating budget, can we get the same PowerPoint slides like you all presented that show the graph and show?
Sure.
That would be helpful.
It'll be easier.
Because looking at prior year actual versus current year, looking at the operating budget, you don't get
The gist of what I just said.
The difference. So that would be helpful. Thank you.
Perfect.
Anything else? Okay. And anytime you all want to say that's too important, and if we miss a month, and you wanted to go back as a regular
We'll be back.
Five-minute update.
Right.
We can always do that. Did you say $770,000 behind?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, maybe we shouldn't go back to Yeah. That's why Monthly update, I mean
Well, the monthly updates, and I get it, but the update is not what's going to make us move forward.
Right.
I'm bringing it forward.
No, I know.
It's the work that we need to do. So I don't know if just bringing the report is going to make it happen, but I think you're going to want
Only in a month since we haven't had it.
Right.
You lost $700,000.
But because I'm bringing it forward, because I'm bringing that
You're raising your hand.
I'm raising my hand, so you won't miss it. But I said, I wanted to say it publicly because I really want the college family to understand that, that we need to get moving. And I wanted to make sure the board knew where we were. So I think making sure that you know, here are the things that we have put into place. We have a plan already to address that deficit.
And really, that
We've got three
Dr. Crawford highlighted it in her report, in which is really what our intention was, was to have it in the snapshot of the overall, and perhaps we just need to highlight it differently? Maybe that's
Well, I brought it back.
Even you said you didn't get the magnitude of it by looking at the packet. So clearly, I mean, I appreciate very much you bringing that up, but if one of us gets asked that question by a legislator
Right.
Or somebody else, and we don't know the answer, I mean, I think we need to know the, I think we need to know the numbers.
How about this? Would it be, would the board be amenable to what I'm doing is sharing that here's where we are? And I'm pointing that out without having to do the report every month. You have it in writing. Can I bring that forward? I think I even shared it on the phone. Just want to give you a heads up, this is where we are, so you're not blindsided. But what I didn't bring was the plan. So let me share that with you, and we've already been working on it, but I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware.
To Trustee Bello's point, I think it's twofold. Is one, when we do our dashboard, perhaps under resource alignment, we need to add
A square.
We're good, we're bad, you know?
We're not bad.
Green, yellow, red
We're not bad.
Dashboard here. And then if we have the PowerPoint graphs that we used to have that didn't show that, I think that's the visual that we've been used to seeing
Right.
That would help highlight it. And I think that was, I agree that once you have a plan, which should be in January.
Yeah, we already have it.
Yeah. We'll have the discussion in January specifically, but in the meantime, for a monthly packet, if we can make those two adjustments.
And that'll be perfect in January because that's when we bring the enrollment and we bring where we are. So that'll already be in the, in the plan. So we're good.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll need, don't worry about it, I'm good. I think, I think your suggestions will meet what I was going to actually try to provide, but it's good.
Okay. And again, work in progress.
No, I get it.
So all feedback is appreciated. All right. Any other questions, Record?
Can we just go back to that? So what am I doing here?
We're adding, adding on the dashboard, here's Dr. Crawford
The revenue and expenses.
Under resource alignment, red, yellow, green, where we are
And enrollment.
Budget.
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 Gotcha.
Budget.
Gotcha. Okay. I just need to make sure I understood what we're doing.
And then the second With real numbers, though, not just down one point.
Yeah, that's what I was going to add.
Yes, yeah.
Real numbers.
And then the second thing would be in the packet, instead of just our operating budget report
PowerPoint.
To get the snapshots that we used to have that show, so we can see where we are over the course. Are we losing ground? Are we on track? Because some of these, some of our budget issues are cyclical based on when our reimbursements come
Right.
And tuition's paid. And, you know, when we get it every month, we hear that almost ad nauseam, which is why we thought perhaps we didn't hear it every month.
Right.
If some of these issues are because of the timing, we do need to know that.
Yes, I was going to say, that's what's going, things I was going to say, Madam Chair, like, where you have the red and it's negative, you may want to add like an asterisk and say that it's a timing issue and this is why.
That makes sense.
Gives us a better, better feedback in terms of
That makes sense.
Getting frantic about why we're not meeting the targeted numbers.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're ready.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I don't know how many of you had a chance to see the governor's budget. It is out. And I believe that the House and Senate will be out soon. Trustee Gibbons?
Yeah, within a week or two.
Within a week or two? Okay. And so for the state colleges, the commissioner has been working with the chancellor on a funding model that's based on growth. We talked a little bit about that last month. And so they're continuing to work on that and lobbying for it. We're in favor of the plan. The colleges are in favor, most of us are, in favor of the plan. The unique thing about the growth plan that is being proposed is that this year, it appears that all colleges will be made whole. Next year, if we don't grow, we lose. And so that's going to be different than what we're used to. So there's two models. One is a growth model, and one is performance. So on one end, you get more money based upon how many new programs, new number of students, new things you do. This year, they're going to catch everybody up on the growth model. The other model is performance-based, based on how many students complete and how many students get a high-wage-paying job. SPC does very well on the high-wage-paying job. We don't do well on student completion. We're also not doing what we need to do on the recruitment. So we have a new recruitment plan that was presented to me yesterday, I believe, Dr. Connor, was that yesterday? And we believe we have captured a new way of doing some things that we have not done, working with marketing to move forward. But I want to say to, you know, with the state funding, we're going to have to grow and we're going to have to complete. Students have to finish. And so those are the two funding models that the commissioner and the chancellor is working on. This has not been approved totally by the Senate nor the House. So we don't know where we're going to land yet. The session starts in January. I'm looking at you, Trustee.
The second week of January.
The second week of January. So we'll be spending a lot of time. The trustees have agreed to join me, and I'm so excited. You know, Mr. Carroll, if you want to go to Tallahassee with us, you are more than welcome, you and your team, Jesse, for us to vie for funding. We have two asks right now. As you know, we're trying to grow our nursing program, and to do that, we have to increase our simulation lab. And what will allow, this will allow us to do is instead of fighting for clinical spaces in the hospital, we will be able to use human patient simulators and be able to expand nursing, have evening programs or something else to fill the vacant positions. I think the last time I checked, BayCare has about 400 vacant nursing positions. And so we want to be a part of the solution. It meets the governor's workforce growth plan. It also meets the needs of our community. We also are working with our commissioners on how we can improve the workforce at Tarpon. And so our second ask is going to be some work we're doing in Tarpon. And then the other piece is, we talked about the Health Education Center. We have our second meeting on the P3 partnership concept. And so we're going to continue moving in that direction. Those are the legislative pieces so far. And then the other thing, Trustee Gibbons talked about graduation and finding a space. The earliest we can have graduation in the spring is going to be May 19th, which I believe is a Tuesday. Is that a Tuesday? Okay. And we usually have graduation a week or so before that, but the TROP has an event. May 19th is our board meeting date. So I'm asking the board, would you be willing to change the meeting date to the 12th in May?
Yeah.
Any, Trustee Gibbons, any?
I'm probably not. I probably won't make it.
Trustee Kim will actually have graduation then on Tuesday.
The 19th, right. To not delay it further than it would have had to be delayed. Okay. And that's my report for this month's.
Thank you. Is there any other business? Yes?
Let me just say this about the legislature. We should be very afraid because they didn't do much during these committee weeks. I'm just going to tell you. That means there's a lot of time on legislators' hands, they usually come up with very, very, very dumb bills when that happens. So I'm just telling. I'm just being very honest. A lot of people are nervous because there's not a lot been done, not a lot of work been done. And so what happens is the sausage doesn't take as long to make, and so they just throw it all together. And so, you know, we need to be very mindful and be very careful and be on watch for anything that is going to hurt, especially St. Pete College. I'm not worried about any of the colleges at this point. I just think you need to, we need to be very, very careful and make sure we have somebody reviewing all education policy and bills on a weekly basis because it's going to be a short, tight window. And when people get back from this, because they're not going back until, I think they're doing one week in December, and then they won't be back until the legislature starts, right? So there's very few bills that have gone through the committee process. They're going to be moving at warp speed. A lot of these things, policy and all that stuff
Sliding.
Well, yeah, and it's going to be done by staff and lobbyists. And when, and it's driven by that process at the last minute, you can be sure that somebody's trying to get something in there that they want for themselves. So I would just tell you that the shortened amount of time and how this committee weeks have ended up going into Thanksgiving, especially Christmas break, is, you know, I would be very mindful and be watching all things so that we don't make any errors or mistakes and make sure that we get our, you know, our budget request in ASAP.
Yeah, they're in. Those are done.
And follow up on them with the Senate President and the leadership.
Thank you. Thanks. Anyone else? With that, our next meeting date is December 17th at the Epicenter in the Collaborative Labs. It will be our strategic focus. So we'll have a two-hour plan that will look at the third year of our three-year plan.